I'm Bruce Dingman and this is Dr. David Gartson. We're known as the Frickin' Frack Show. So, I want to cover five points with you, but first, let's start with a word of prayer. David, would you?
Thanks, Lord. We just continue to give you praise for who you are and who we are because of who you are. Thank you that you are the sovereign God in each of our lives. And you've brought us to this point where we're convinced that the steps of righteous men and women are ordered of you. And so, we're thankful for these that represent your faithfulness to call the right people at the right time to do the right things to advance your kingdom. And as we think about how critical that is in looking for and listening to your spirit to confirm who this next leader is, we just give you permission. Father, speak, because your servants are willing to listen. And we desire, Father, to do your perfect will in all things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
So, I would like to exchange information with you on five different points. One is, who are we and why are we appropriate to assist in finding your next president? Two, what is it you want to make sure we know about this institution or about Lancaster? Three, what would you like to see in the next president? Four, tell you about the search and selection process? And then last, open it up if you have any names to suggest or places you suggest us look. So, I've been doing executive search for 30 years. I actually grew up near Rochester, New York, and with a good Pennsylvania Dutch name, have some heritage in this region. My grandfather was born near Williamsport. This is my 17th presidential search for an evangelical college, university, or seminary. And I'm just so thrilled to be able to serve the Lord by helping you to find the next leader for your organization. We have a small search firm, so we have four recruiters and support staff of three. We're all evangelicals. And David works with me on some of the higher education searches. David, why don't you tell them something about yourself?
You know, I'm the product of Bible college education. I was a 14-year-old kid who was taken in off the streets by a free Methodist minister and his wife in northern Ontario and essentially flunked out of high school because my guidance counselor told me I was too stupid to be in high school. And I believed him. But the couple who took me in off the streets felt like God had a call in my life. And so, they interceded with a small denominational Bible college in southern Ontario. And that Bible school, as I interviewed, said, "Well, we're not sure, but we'll give you one semester to prove yourself. You make a C., you can stay." And I made a C. And then, the next semester, they said, "Well, one more semester. If you make a C., we'll let you into the program." And so, I made the C. and was enrolled in the Bachelor of Theology program in preparing for pastoral ministry. My life was changed by those Bible school experiences, both the faculty and those who complement and the co-curricular people. And particularly, watching the staff as they interacted. So often, in these kinds of institutions, the staff don't realize the tremendous impact that they have on students. And while my life was significantly touched by several faculty in that Bible college, it was two or three staff people who just day in, day out, served God faithfully in that place that also spoke into my life. I went on then and completed bachelor's and master's degrees and PhD degrees and ended up in a path that I did not really anticipate at all. I struggled in Bible college about my calling. Most of my friends were being called to Ooga Booga as missionaries in Africa or something, you know? And I didn't have that sense of call. And others were sensing they were being called to pastoral ministry. And I remember one of the faculty saying to me, "David, it's not about ability, it's about availability. If you'll just make yourself available to the Lord, he'll direct your path." And over the years, I've had the privilege now of being president of three Christian universities, of Regent University, one of the founding team members of that institution, and then president of Asbury University and president of Taylor University. And have, in my retirement years, returned to my first love of teaching in the field of leadership, teaching the doctoral programs at Asbury Theological Seminary, and continue to work, as Bruce has indicated, in helping find and equip the next generation of Christian leaders. So, I feel like I've come home to a place like this. And it just reminds me how critical these kinds of institutions are in terms of equipping the emerging generation of Christian leaders. So, thank you for the privilege to be a part of this very important work that you're doing to advance the kingdom.
So, now, I'm going to open it up for your input. And what are the things you want to make sure that we know about Lancaster Bible College or Capital Seminary or about living in Lancaster? By the way, we like this area and we like this school. You are a healthy institution. You've got a good team spirit, committed to your mission. The school's doing well. It's great. We've seen a lot of schools, and this has got the best balance of any we've seen. By the way, people from Lancaster are not the most outspoken. Maybe hardest working, but not the most outspoken. So then, going on to the next point of what you would like to see in a president, let me tell you the things I think we're looking for, and then you can add to or you can give pushback. Does that make sense? There's no question that the person has to have the faith, the theology that fits your institution. We're not looking for somebody who's going to change where you're at theologically. We're looking for somebody who's going to have a healthy level of self-confidence, and yet they're going to be a humble person. They're going to be a person who has great EQ. And if you don't know what EQ is, emotional quotient is the ability to understand what you're feeling, how you're coming across to others, where the other person is at, and then modifying your approach to reach them in the most effective manner. So, that degree of people skills is really needed. We're looking for somebody who has a servant's heart. They love the students and they love the team. They practice management by walking around. They're not just what we call a desk jockey, but rather, they're out and about. Somebody who's a continuous learner. They need to continue to be progressing. Besides running this organization, they need to know what's happening in culture, what's happening in ministry, what's happening in world events, and where are going to be the strategic opportunities for this college to be involved. We're looking for somebody who's going to have a healthy work ethic, but we're not looking for a workaholic. Never will they have a 40-hour a week on a regular basis. Probably closer to 60 if they're balancing things right, but not 80, because there's so much to do. It's not just daytime, it's evenings and weekends and travel and all those sorts of things. The job is a 50/50 job. 50% focused internally with running the organization, as well as 50% externally with working with the board and major donors and doing strategic things and relationships outside the university. It's a very big job. This person also can't be expert in every area. They need to value the wisdom and experience of others and be able to delegate things to them to do things because they can't do it all. We're looking for somebody who hopefully has 10 years or more to give. We need somebody who's going to fit Lancaster, Pennsylvania. There's a lot of people that won't. There is a cultural fit. And so, we're looking for all of those aspects. Now, David, I'm feeling like I've left a couple of things out. Can you think of anything?
You know, I think that, you know, obviously, the broad aspects of this, as somebody who gets this institution, right? And understands what it is that makes this institution, this institution. And so, again, part of the reason that Bruce does these kinds of forums is to get from you that understanding. What is it that will keep this institution strategic and effective moving forward that you hope the next senior administrator gets and is committed to? And so, you know, we have these broad skill sets and understandings based on, you know, a broad range of searches that we've done in terms of what makes a president of an institution like this successful. But then, those have to be tailored. It's not an off-the-rack suit, right? Those have to be tailored to fit the unique things that make Lancaster Bible Lancaster Bible. And see those as foundational to whatever God has next for the expanding vision of the institution.
Okay, yes.
So, we need a duplicate of Dr. Tag.
Right. No, I've heard that, and I've got to tell you, he's really special.
I know. And, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'm really thankful for the team that's assembled. One thing that stuck out to me when I saw the list, that it's highly represented on the educational side. Nobody from marketing, nobody from advancement. If I had, there are two things on your list that maybe I'd take some exception with that I want to give input to. One is when you said fits Lancaster. The organization is larger than Lancaster at this point. It also encompasses Philadelphia, Pinkbelt, Boca Raton. The person has to know those urban settings as well and be comfortable with working in those settings as well. So...
I agree with you totally. But it's not enough to just fit those and not fit Lancaster. They've got to do both.
Absolutely, absolutely. The other is, I think, as the organization's moving to this growth point, I certainly, I want our provost to be great on mission for the educational side. We're hiring a president, and I think they need to be a great speaker. They need to be out maybe 75% of the time and in 25 if they're going to help the organization move to the next level that it needs to. Dr. Tag walking around campus makes me feel great, but really, they're the great team functioning internally. I think the next president needs to be out more and could really help on the marketing and recruitment and advancement side if they focused more on that.
David, talking about all the public speaking and that sort of thing, maybe you could contribute what one chancellor did at a school where you were president that helped you with that. I'm thinking of at Taylor.
Yeah.
Because Dr. Tag has said that he would be glad to do that sort of thing for the new president.
I think that to kind of develop what will be the forever distribution of time and activity, you know, changes. I think the new president needs to spend a disproportionate amount of time getting to know the institution, particularly if they come from the outside, if they're not an internal person, they're not a person who is an alum of the place or who has served on the board or something like that. And I think that as the person gets to know the institution, then they have essentially, my PhD is in organizational communication theory, and the effectiveness of communicating the mission requires the passion of commitment to the mission. And what I've discovered in each of my transitions is that I needed to take sufficient time to get to know the heartbeat of the institution so that I could speak with authority and with integrity. You know, we have, our problem in communications is too much aspiration and not enough reality. And so, one of the things that a significant amount of time on campus during the first 12, 18, 24 months will provide, and on campuses, because you are in multiple locations, is to help the president understand that messaging. One of the things that we are being told, obviously, this is a board decision, is that Dr. Tag is willing to continue in some kind of a relationship to work alongside the new president in some particular capacity. When I went to Taylor University, the president was Dr. Jay Kessler. He'd been the former president of Youth for Christ. He'd been at Taylor almost 20 years, had turned the institution around. So, he was a legend on campus. Quite intimidating to follow a legend. Your next president will feel exactly the same way. But what helped me significantly was the fact that Jay reported to me in my office and was available to help during particularly those first 18 to 24 months to be the person in the external communities. I deployed Jay. His great gifts were, he loved the roar of the crowd and the smell of the grease paint, as we would say, and he was very effective in communicating externally. So, I deployed Jay in wide ranges of community kinds of activities. And one of his greatest helps to me was that he, as he would speak in rotary clubs and at commencements and other various things that I would be invited to who couldn't go to, he was constantly mantling me as the next president and then was mature enough to not get in the way of the kind of leadership that maybe was different then and direction different than what he would do. And so, you have really the best of all worlds here in terms of keeping the external constituencies informed and energized if this kind of partnership should work out. And again, that's the board's decision, obviously, not ours. With President Teague being liberated on behalf of the new president to interact with these various constituencies, while your new president gets to know who you are, so he grabs not just the head of the place, but the heart of the place. Because one of the realities is, is that students come, donors give, not so much to the head, but to the heart of an institution. They're concerned about not just information, they're concerned about transformation. And for me, as a new president, to speak with integrity, I had to be convinced that we were more in the transformation business than we were in the information business. And so, I think you'll see, as time progresses, what happened with Jay was that his tenure was limited to two to three years. By the time I'd gotten the heart of the place at Taylor, he was retiring fully, and then I was able to give more time. I'm often asked in my executive coaching by new presidents, and that's one of the things that I do, how much time do I spend in fundraising and public relations and marketing? And my response is 100%, because everything you say and do impacts the mission and vision that your various supporting constituencies see. So, you want to be sure that you've got that vision deeply embedded and that you can speak with passion and with integrity about that vision. And then, as you go out, and for a period of time at Taylor, I was spending, well, at Asbury, I spent almost 80% of my time off campus for a couple of years, once I had gone through this first year and a half of getting to know the place, because the institution was in deep trouble financially and needed a great deal of interaction. Fortunately, your new president is not coming into a Titanic crisis where radical things have to be done. He or she can get the time to know the place and then get the heart of the place so they can communicate with passion the vision of the place, which in turn then helps public relations and marketing.
Let me bring up something about fundraising in regards to what we're looking for in a president. They have to be willing to do the ask. If you stop and think about the scripture that says, "Be ever ready to tell of the hope that is within you," it doesn't mean it's your responsibility to accept the Lord, but it's your responsibility to tell them how to accept the Lord. It's up to the Holy Spirit that they accept the Lord. True? It's the same way with fundraising. The president is going to have to be willing to tell them about the opportunity to give, but not get bummed out when they don't, because it's up to the Holy Spirit to get them to want to give. And so, that attitude towards fundraising has to be a positive one. And oftentimes, people are in positions where they have to do fundraising where that's not something they're really good at. So, we're really looking hard at that to make sure that it's going to be a positive thing. Fundraising ability is very important because your institution cannot grow, can't even maintain where it's at without having major donors. There isn't enough revenue coming in the other ways to do all of that. Yes, sir?
I'm fairly new to the college, but it appears like in a short period of time, there's a recognition that LBC is becoming a little larger player in the landscape of higher biblical education. So, is there any consideration of like a candidate having some experience, not just maybe with an institution, but really kind of being a part of that landscape of higher biblical education around our country? Does that make sense?
Yes, and we would consider anybody coming from anything. They could come from public higher education, they could come from churches, they could come from parachurches, they could come from anything. But we really want to make sure that they, one, have a passion for the students, that hopefully, they've had some experience in teaching, they've got the right education appropriate for being a president, although it's possible that someone's a president and they don't have a doctorate. I think of Chuck's, excuse me, of Joe Stoll, who's president of Cornerstone, and before that, he was president of Moody. He has an honorary doctor, but not an earned doctorate. I think of the president of Calvin College, and he's an attorney. He doesn't have a doctorate except for the law degree. So, it's possible, but we really want someone who's going to have the right credentials for the sake of the accreditation of your institution. The accrediting organizations want to have that quality of education at the head of your school. So, we're looking for someone from a wide variety of areas. If you were the search committee and you were looking for someone to fight Goliath, would you have chosen David? He wasn't a military guy. He never fought a giant before. So, in this process, one of the things we're doing is we're including prayer and fasting before the search committee goes in to interview the final candidates, because we don't want them to hear just their own thinking, we want them to hear the Holy Spirit. So, a candidate could be different than what we're expecting, but we need to have a piece from the Holy Spirit that transcends logic, could be in keeping with logic, but it's bigger than logic that this is the right person. Yes, ma'am?
So, I appreciated what you were saying earlier as far as like the qualities of the president. I think one very important quality, which I've always respected with Dr. Tag, is his humbleness. And I've also appreciated that he allows the leaders that he has around him to lead. And, I mean, he definitely doesn't like let them do their own thing, but I know with my boss, his distinctive is education and curriculum, and he allows Philip to make decisions with that. And I just, I think it's, with LBC for me, I think it's always been a partnership and people working together for the same cause. And I do hope that this person that comes in is able to lead, but also allow other leaders to lead as well.
No question. As we understand it, having met with Phil and the others on the senior leadership team and Dr. Tag, that this is an unusually well-balanced team in regards to how well they work together and how well-equipped each is in their area, and Dr. Tag's style in empowering them to run their area, although he stays informed with what's going on.
Oh, yeah. He's in charge.
Right. No, we're looking for that as a duplication of what's currently in place in that sense. Yes, ma'am?
When you talk about LBC and our culture, historically, we are a Bible college and have been since our foundation. And so, even the person that's coming in and sort of what I think what Rod is kind of saying, is it's going to be really important that this person has a commitment to the Bible college movement, to be willing to help build ABHE and our sister schools to kind of keep the movement alive and not come in with the concept of, you know what, we could be a Christian liberal arts college, that wouldn't be a problem. Because that's part of who we are as a Bible college. And so, when you start to change that, you change who Lancaster Bible College is as an institution. So, the person does need to have a commitment to the Bible college movement and desire to see it relevant for today.
I would agree that the person has to value what is the identity of Lancaster Bible College and where they're at. But I'm not going to put God in a box. As the president works with the trustees and with faculty and with staff as to what are the opportunities that Lancaster Bible College might expand into, I'm not going to say what it can't be. But there's no question, you are a Bible college and you're good at that, and you're among the largest among the ABHE, and we anticipate that's what you're going to continue to do. But I'm not going to say that that couldn't modify in some way. Does that make sense? Well, let me tell you about the search and selection process. So, we're having these town hall meetings because we really want your input. We want to understand LBC. We want to understand what a candidate's going to be coming into, and that input is going to help us as we draft what we call the Opportunity Profile. That'll be a document that describes LBC, it describes the position, describes what we're looking for. The search committee will edit that to make sure it reflects what they want to be said. And then, also, there will be a questionnaire for candidates. And the search committee will edit that to make sure that it reflects the questions that they want information on as we proceed. So, we are doing research to identify even more and more people to network with and people who might be potential candidates. So, as I indicated, a person could come from having been a very successful leader in a church or another university, college, or seminary, and other places as well. We don't know where they're going to come from, so we're casting that broadly. So, would there be 400 or 500 people we're contacting? Probably. We would anticipate that between the names suggested and those that raised their hands, that there will be 60 to 80 people who are considered. And out of those, that we'll interview in person, 12 to 15. So, we will interview them, either David or I, with their spouse. Why their spouse? Well, nobody in the world knows them better than their spouse does. And so, there's about 10 questions that we ask the spouse about the personality of the candidate and trying to understand the candidate better. And actually, the spouse finds this to be an enjoyable process, the way we go about it. But it's very insightful in trying to understand candidates. So, we're trying to get inside their head and their heart to see if they've got the qualities and the characteristics that we're looking for to be the next president. Then, we will give the list to the search committee on who seem to be the ideal candidates, and they will select the top four that we will then do their reference checking at 360-degree fashion, check with their former bosses, their close peers, their subordinates to really understand the type of work that they've done. And you know what is the most crucial of those references to check with? Subordinates. Because sometimes, people can be good in managing up and their boss doesn't know what they're really like, but subordinates always know what they're really like. And so, that's really important to us. We also will then do the background checks. We'll verify degrees, we'll do the criminal, the credit, the driving, and we will also do Google, Facebook, and Twitter to make sure that we really understand this person and that there's no skeletons that we're finding in the closet. So, then, the search committee will spend a day fasting and some time in prayer before they go into two days to interview the top four candidates. If they don't find what they're looking for in the top four candidates, then we'll meet them another time and they'll interview more. But almost always, they do find who they're looking for in these top four. So, we want them to have a unanimous choice in regards to who it is they're recommending forward to the trustees. Again, we want logic that it's the right person, but we also want a piece from the Holy Spirit that transcends logic that this is the right person. And so, then, it'll go forward to the trustees, and the trustees will then interview the person and offer the job. And we're anticipating that that'll take place in April or May, and the person will start the 1st of July. So, that's the timing for it. Any questions about the search and selection process?
Do you utilize any diagnostic or personality tools or assessments? I've been involved or aware of some large churches or other organizations who really thought they had the heart figured out, but there were maybe some underlying or hidden things that weren't revealed.
If the search committee wishes to have those done, we can have it done, but we don't ordinarily do it, and why is that? We find that past performance is the best indication of future performance, and the other person's perception of how you're coming across and what you're doing is their reality. And so, that reference checking and understanding how they're doing it is really very important. When a person does a personality assessment, they're telling you about themselves, and if they don't know themselves, they may not be accurate. Or if they're trying to tell you what they think you want to hear, they may not be accurate. I actually was hired to do a search after they had used another search firm who used an assessment tool, and there was heavy emphasis on that. And the person had gone through the assessment test really well, but when they were hired, they got fired within two months because they were a disaster with their staff. And so, if they want to have the assessment tool fine, but let's not ignore the importance of effective reference checking. So, that's an important part of it. Yes, sir?
Just have a comment. First of all, I just really am burdened with the desire to just make sure everybody's praying for those on the committee, because, you know, as much as I personally feel like I had more of a control over it, you know, of course, that's always your personal desire, you know? But the Lord has appointed these folks, and, you know, we need to be in prayer for them. I mean, this is such a responsibility, and the way that a new president will be selected successfully will be because of our prayers for those on the committee. That said, I've had the privilege of serving alongside Dr. Tag for his tenure here. And one thing that, a funny story that I always remember and a serious one actually too, but on the day that he was announced as president... too, but on, on the day that he was announced as president, we were in SAC 101, and we had a chance to talk to him on the way out of the door. And I said, "Dr. Tag, I just appreciate your, your commitment to serve LBC." And he says, "Don't thank me, thank the Lord." And that was just such a tremendous comment to me that showed his commitment to servant leadership. And I think that that's really the primary aspect or quality of the president that I would put forth as something that should be looked at, is, is that person's ability to lead as a servant.
I concur.
And to be reiterated as many times as, as people feel necessary. I think that's that important.
This person needs to be a very spiritual person, and prayer needs to be a vibrant part of their life. They need to be a good example, not just in their leadership, but in their spirituality. So we are looking for that characteristic in this person. Anything else? Yes, sir?
As you're looking at internal and external candidates, how do you balance some of the bias that might be from internal candidates that they know this, so they're an easier fit, but long-term, that may not be the best fit?
Well, one of the nice things about having us as external people to do the, the vetting is that we don't come in with a bias, we are very objective. And so if they have what we're looking for, then we will be a sponsor for them in making sure that somehow they are not underappreciated or underrecognized, but we're also going to make sure they're not over-recognized. This is an apolitical process. There's no favoritism involved in it because of what we bring to bear in that sense. If they don't have what we're looking for, because the other candidates are stronger, then I will tell them why it is that others are stronger, and if they don't like the answer, they can blame me, but they don't blame the search committee. And so that's also an advantage for using an outsider in that sense. But I assure you, if there's an internal candidate who has what we're looking for, they will be appropriately recognized. They won't be over-recognized, and they won't be under-recognized. We make that commitment. You had a...
Are single people allowed to be candidates?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, ma'am? I thought I saw a hand. Yes, ma'am?
How and where do you advertise for such a position? And then you mentioned that your company went through 17 processes like this. Are those 17 still holding their positions?
Yes and no.
Or have they retired? You know what I'm saying?
Right. One died of a brain tumor, and, and sometimes they leave for various reasons. We will not recruit away a candidate we've placed for seven years, and so far, we've never done it. And the whole organization is out of bounds for two years, so we wouldn't come back to take somebody else away within two years. And again, we've never done it so far. We do not concentrate just in doing searches for higher education. We do it for a lot of Christian organizations, whether it's a, it's a camp, it's a missions organization, or it's a Christian school. So that helps because we, if we only concentrated in doing Christian higher education, we would run into a lot of conflicts in out-of-bounds or those sorts of situations. So we don't have that sort of problem. You had another question?
How do you advertise for such a position?
Sure. The school will have to put the advertisement in the job board for the Coalition of Christian Colleges and Universities. And that's the primary place to do it. To be honest with you, it's our own database and the research that we do that is the primary way to really get the word out. I use, I talk about the Willie Sutton Syndrome. Anybody ever hear of Willie Sutton? Willie Sutton was a bank robber. And then somebody asked him, "Why do you rob banks?" He says, "Uh, because that's where the money is." And so we look where they might be, and we go to that institution. And then we, we contact them and say, "We're doing this search. Do you know somebody, or might you have an interest?" And that's why we cast the net broadly. You've probably seen some documentaries of the, the fish trawler that dumps the load of fish out of the net onto the deck. And they're throwing a lot of them away because that's not what they're looking for. They're only keeping a smaller amount. That's what we're doing.
You mentioned that you interview with the wives.
Yes.
And I know with us, Paulette is such...
No, I said spouse.
Spouse, sorry.
That's all right, because the candidate could be a woman.
Yes. But does the spouse's personality at all affect your decision to bring them on? Paulette is such a huge part of our campus and such a wonderful first lady, if you want to use that term. And so that, just curious if that plays into it at all?
If, if she is a wallflower, or she is gregarious, someplace in between, that's fine. But if the person had a terribly negative personality, that would probably make a difference. There is not a high expectation from the spouse in that regards. The, the expectation is that they will be the wind beneath the wings, helping the president to be successful, happy at home and energized and those sorts of things. But no, we're, we're not putting, we're not recruiting for the, the Mrs. President in that sense. We don't think that would be fair. Yes, sir?
So I guess I would just like to say, I, I think President Tag is a very rare combination of a lot of great characteristics. And so, you know, there's a part of me that thinks that it, it could be very, it could be kind of tempting to look for another President Tag. And so I just feel like it's possible that there could be someone who fits a very different mold that could do a phenomenal job. And so while there are some incredible dynamic personalities out there, President Tag not only has that incredible dynamic personality, but he also has the follow-through, he has the high EQ that you referenced, he has the business savvy. And so I would personally love to see someone who has the follow-through, the EQ, the business savvy. But if they're not as dynamic as a personality, I would be okay with that. So I, I just feel like, to an extent, looking at someone who's going to break the mold a little bit, if they have the right characteristics, could be possibly the best way to go for the institution. As you're looking, just willing to break that mold, I think, is probably part of the mindset that could be effective in, in that search.
It's probably true that the majority of us are married, and that when we were single, we had a certain mindset in regards to what we were looking for in a spouse. True? But when it came to the one you actually married, the person could have been somewhat different. And that's sort of the way we're approaching it. Yes, there are certain things that are gotta-haves, and there are certain areas where the person could be different. And so we have an open mind in regards to that. But the gotta-haves, you gotta have.
I've been trying to kind of pick together different parts about what we've been saying and trying to figure a global picture. And we have, we have some areas where we really are growing. We're, we're growing quite a bit. I graduated in '09 and from here, and boy, we're a completely different institution from just that short period of time. And we have the different sites, and there's some business savvy that a couple of us have mentioned with being able to interact with all of these different areas that we are in and we are pursuing. And I've been in a couple of cross-departmental interviews, and the one thing that always comes up is family. LBC is a family, and it doesn't matter that you're at the Philly location, or you're at the Green Belt location, or you're at Memphis, we're a family. And I was trying to, I was trying to figure out, for those at LBC that really make that happen, how, how does that happen? And in particular with President Tag, like, I don't interact with him on a weekly basis, a daily basis, a monthly basis. I interact with him maybe twice a year, but he's still family. And I was trying to figure out specifically why. Those two times a year that I interact with him, I have a very personal interaction with him, where I can tell stories about him. I can tell stories of a personal interaction with President Tag that I was a student that impacted my life, and it was two minutes, just like that. Two minutes, pass and comment. And a lot of us have mentioned those kinds of situations. And yet, we still, we respect him, and we, we know that he is our leader. And I think the, the next person, while they need to be a great communicator and be able to cut to the core and tell us what is going on, and not kind of give us the ring around and talk in circles, we need to be able to have personal interaction with this person. And I think bringing up the EQ and the humbleness and those kind of descriptive things, that, that's a big part of who we are. And not just here, that's who we are at the other sites, and that's why, why we are what we are.
You're absolutely right, and let me share a personal story that adds to that. The person that I was born to be, I had a natural orientation for results. And sometimes I was black and white thinking in regards to that, which meant I wasn't that great with interpersonal relationships. And the Lord gave me the right woman to be my wife. One of the first things she said was, "You know there won't be a single program that makes it to heaven? Only people." People have to be the number-one priority for this person. The ability to make people feel like they can relate to this person, because if they can't relate to them, how can this person witness to them? How could this person direct their teaching? How can this person direct their leadership development? Besides their theological position, their faith walk, their people skills is number one. So what you're talking about is absolutely a crucial part. We will not present to you somebody that we think is cold, impersonal, condescending, egotistical, right?
That's right.
We won't do it, because we don't believe that's the right leader. Yes, sir?
To Bethany's point, I was thinking of, when I met with Dr. Tag when I first started, right as I was about to start working here, he had, he asked me a question. I said, "What's the favorite, what's your favorite part of your job?" And he said, without any hesitation, "Interaction with students." Like, he lives that. And Bethany was just talking about seeing that. I think that that pervades like what we do, and like when we talk to students about, like, we're going to register in this office, and we talk, then someone's still be like, almost like surprised with the level of personal care that we give. You know, it's, it's good customer service, but it's also benefited by our faith. And Dr. Tag shows that, and he readily was like, "Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I'm about." And so while we're not looking for an exact clone of that Renee said, "Oh, that would be great." It might be someone with different, different, you know, attributes, like Sean was saying, but I think that that has to be something that's core and certainly would be, you know, essential to, to who we are now, by other things you're saying Lancaster correctly.
When we were, when we were talking with Dr. Tag, one of the things that he said that just made such a strong impression with me, because I believe in it so strongly, is that, he says, "We don't hire any faculty member who doesn't want to be involved in life on life." That personal involvement with each student, that's precious.
I think one other thing that's also important is that they, they evidence a strong commitment to the local church in the history of their, of their life and their career, just in evidence of commitment and not kind of, you know, going all over the place in terms of church involvement, church attendance, because I think that's the primary avenue for spiritual growth, so that they can evidence that and also have strong pastoral references and recommendations as well, whether they're a pastor or whether they have, you know, they're just a member of the church, just having that, that foundation, that commitment, that they're going to be committed to local church when they're here as well.
True. We agree with that. Yes, sir?
I would say along with that, the, I mean, one of the things that I feel like has, I'm, I'm very new to this app. One of the things that has preceded my impression of Dr. Tag is his commitment to scripture and being like, it's a Bible college. I would say that that's paramount in a leader, and I would not want to see that uncommitted or faltered or given up in any way.
We had heard that there had been some, some studies, some thought about, was Lancaster Bible College the right name for the future? And that they came down to the decision, never do they want Bible to disappear from their name. I agree. Because that's who you are, and that's what's most important. Yes, sir?
So along those lines, Dr. Tag has said that he is given the opportunity to compromise every single day in regards to safeguarding scripture as of utmost importance. How is that factored into what you guys do, and how do you examine that?
We look hard to understand the person's head and their heart and their past experiences. So talking with them and their spouse and their references, we try and see if this person has been making changes and what the changes were over time. That's the best indication we have for the future in regards to that. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think, I think you've hit a very key point in the must-haves, and that is that there's an absolute unequivocal commitment to the authority of scripture, the centrality of scripture, as the primary and most important rule for faith and practice. And so we get that, we know who you are. We, in doing the Moody Bible, excuse me, the Moody Bible Institute search, that was a similar kind of concern. Absolute unwavering commitment to the authority of scripture in all things that relate to faith and practice. And so that will be a primary checkpoint. If that box isn't checked, then the candidate doesn't move to the next level of, of interview and consideration.
So, does anybody have any names to suggest? I've got a pen handy. My email is my name, bruce@dingman.com, just like Dingman's Falls and Dingman's Ferry. So please, if you have any suggestions, or you have any comments or questions, you'll get a response directly from me. Thank you so much for coming today, I appreciate it.